I would like to call to order the meeting for Tuesday, December 6th, council meeting. I would like to have a moment of silence and pledge of allegiance, so if I could, please have everyone stand.
Olivia Brady, Valerie Scott Cooper, Heather Lewis, Hakeem Jones, Sue Ann Gardner, Derek Perry, Sonia Sanders.
Here. Would a member of council like to make a motion to approve the minute meetings for November 15th of 2016? All in favor? Eyes have it, meeting minutes from November 15th, 2016 are approved. Earlier this evening, council had executive session pertaining to litigation. So I would like to thank everyone who took the time to express interest in the Citizens Leadership Academy. And again, I want to thank yourself, this time away from your families and your friends and to other commitments that you may have had. Again, from on behalf of council, we thank you for your participation and for all that you're doing for the community and that it doesn't end here and maybe eventually you'll be sitting in one of those seats. This happens to be our fourth Citizen Leadership Academy and hopefully we'll have many, many more and also many more participants that actually care about the community and that would want to partake. So with that being said, I'll start with the first certificate belonging to Rosi Garzón. Did I say that right? Okay.
Madam President, excuse me if you want to do the little tradition of having the members, the graduates coming.
Our next participant is Lynn Carroll. Vice President Perry, do we have any announcements this evening?
Sweet dreams start with warm PJs. It's a danger season and it is the coldest time in our community for children and teens that we serve and families that we support. Many children in our community face the winter months without the warmth and security most of us enjoy. Please help us give them the bedtimes they deserve. Warm cozy pajamas let them know they are loved helps them through the darkest nights. What we need are winter weight jammies from sizes infant, toddler, through school aged and teens. Please drop off at one of our convenient locations listed below. And to drop off locations is the Vance Center, which is on 212 Cherry Street. And you can drop those off on Mondays and Wednesdays. The municipality main lobby here, the perthondinary office, which is at the courthouse, and Center Theater. If anyone has any information or want to contact someone, you'll call Jill Alderman at (610) 277-9125, extension 307. We have seven days before Christmas. Join in on the gift of giving. The holiday season is upon us and we should all take some time to remember our neighbors in need. Please join with the Norristown Police Department and bring in some joy to some of our communities' neediest families by donating toys and other presents, gift cards, and monetary donations. Monetary donations towards the purchase of gifts can be made by donating to the Norristown Police Foundation. Checks can be made out to Norristown Police Foundation. Please write seven days in the memo on your check. If you're interested in helping, you would contact Erin Alexander Quinn at (610) 270-0424. Norristown Police thanks you for your kindness. We also have the Norristown Fire Department's Third Annual Santa Express. That is on Saturday, December 17th, 2016, between 10:30 a.m. and 1:30 p.m. You need to complete out one of the forms and one must be attached to each gift. Gifts can be dropped off at the Norristown Municipal Lobby here at 235 East Ares Street between 9 a.m. and 4 p.m. from December 12th to December 16th. Only one small box shoe size gift per child. All participants must live within the municipality. The municipality will not purchase gifts, gift wrap, or provide wrapping supplies for any gift. Santa will do his best to arrive at your home between 10:30 a.m. and 1:30 p.m. on December 17th. Please have your child or children ready to come outside and meet Santa when you hear the sirens. They should also be accompanied by a guardian or a parent. Contact Fire Chief's Office at (610) 292-8281 for any questions. Does any other council member have any other things that they want to say? Nope. That's it. Oh, Councilwoman Scott Cooper.
The Help a Single Parent Foundation is holding their annual fundraiser on Sunday, December 11th, from 12 noon till 6 p.m. And they are also accepting donations. And this foundation every year has a Christmas giving on Christmas morning where the children do receive clothing as well as toys. So again, the fundraiser for Help a Single Parent Foundation is this coming Sunday, December 11th, from 12 noon to 6 p.m. at the El Mez Cafe, 24 East Main Street, Norristown.
Does that conclude the announcements? Thank you, Vice President Perry. Madam Secretary, do we have any public comments this evening?
Yes, we do. Mary Ellen D. Gregorio.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of council and municipal employees. Dear council, I would like to obtain some information of the following matters. Snow removal, can someone please tell me why the municipality of Norristown community outreach person did not make any contact with churches and businesses along the emergency snow route to have a collaborative arrangement that they would allow placement of neighbors' cars for parking while the street is being cleaned in this emergency situation? What type of message of health and safety are we conveying to we the people that you do not care where the people put their cars? If they're not moved, you will tow or ticket them? How is this caring for a community? And I understand it was brought up that it was a liability issue, but that's unacceptable since we have affordable care business in Norristown has a verbal agreement with Holy Savior to relocate all his rental vehicles and for sale vehicles off the street during street cleaning day. So I don't see a liability issue there, but I find a failure in my municipality not finding a better solution to help the community put their car somewhere during this emergency snow route. We used to have that type of collaborative working interactions with the community years ago, but I think that we have lost it along the way over the years. We've managed to find ourselves in a situation in this community where we don't interact and find solutions. It's all for who, all for one and one for all. I would like to also know why no one from my council or management was at the county office last week for the 11:30 meeting and the 4 o'clock meeting to speak out about the 11 percent increase burden in our taxes. Please provide me proof that Norristown is not a blighted, poor sanctuary city that is not suffering from crime and that 11 percent will not create a hardship on the Norristown community people. Number three, over the weekend, there were four individuals shot between Friday and late Sunday night, Monday morning, along with robberies with guns. And the reason I know this is because I have that crime mapping come right into my phone. However, there was no other information provided to the media. And at this point right now, I'm curious to find out with the amount of shooting that happened from Friday to Monday morning and the gunpoint robberies, why there's no information being provided to Norristown residents that we have a serious crime problem going on. At least to be on the lookout. In closing, I would like to point out to Mr. Crandall Jones that it is over a 10-day period to respond to someone requesting right to know regarding the water conditions of what the Norristown people are drinking. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Madam Secretary, do we have any other public comments?
Yes, Mary Nowor.
Good evening, it's Holly. It's, yeah, it's my handwriting, sorry. I am once again asking the council-
Excuse me, could you please state your name and your address?
Holly Nowor, and I live at 8 Stanbridge Street. I'm once again coming in front of you and asking that the snow emergency routes on Stanbridge from Maine to Jackson Street where dead ends be removed. I've been told that it's up to council. Council said to get with the Director of Public Works. Director of Public Works says I have to get with the Fire Chief and the Police Chief. Now, I did check with the police, I mean, the Fire Chief, and he said he has nothing to do with the snow emergency routes, that that goes through the public works. Our street dead ends into Jackson Street. From Sturgis Street to Lower Lane is not a snow emergency route. There's really no reason for our street to be a snow emergency route. It doesn't go anywhere. So who is it that I should direct this to? I've gone around in circles now.
No, it's, Mr. Jones will be responding.
Actually, ma'am, I definitely will talk to you at the conclusion of a meeting, but certainly just for the record, we, I know that the Public Works Director has talked to me about the situation and I know he's also had the conversations with the public safety officials as well. I think in the context of statement that the council that we issued today related to why this is necessary, it's really necessary because it's a public safety issue, period, in terms of us making sure that public safety officials, police, fire, and all those related officials have access through the community and that there's egress and ingress for everyone. So that's why it hasn't been removed to this point because it's, understanding is an inconvenience.
You know, it's also a dead end.
I understand that. I absolutely understand this is a dead end, but still, it's a public safety issue, period. And I think if you haven't gotten a chance to read the statement that was issued today and it's on the table for distribution as well as on our website, the whole point of all of this was in response to the, you know, the room full of people who were here and this concerns that have been raised for years by public safety departments about access for emergency services to residents throughout the community. So it doesn't make a difference that it is, it's a dead end because there's still going to be an access issue to houses and residents throughout the community.
Okay, then on the other hand, from Sturgis Street to Lower Lane on Stanbridge, there are businesses, there's access to the state hospital, there's homes, and there's an apartment complex, and that's not a snow emergency route. But yet, in a little street where there's nothing but a few homes, you would make it a snow emergency route. But yet, where there's businesses, a lot of homes, and an apartment complex, and access to the state hospital, it is not. Perhaps someone could come to our street and check it out and not just go by a map?
I will be happy tomorrow to drive to your street with the Public Works Director. I will be at your street tomorrow.
Okay, you might want to check with the Fire Chief too and the Police Chief?
Absolutely, absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
Councilwoman Brady?
Can I just offer one suggestion as to why that section is not a snow emergency route? And that's because there's no parking allowed on the street, so it's easily clouded. If there was a fire in the 0-100 block of Stanbridge Street and it was not an emergency route, the fire vehicles would not be able to get through.
There's parking, there's parking on Stanbridge Street, right past Norfab, I work for the company, right past the, there are homes.
On the street?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, there is parking on the street.
I take that back then.
Yes, I work in-
I was just afraid to suggest as to why that wasn't the case.
No, I think by accident, maybe Main Street to Jackson Street was accidentally made an emergency snow route. That's what I'm thinking, that it could be over, you know, just looked at again.
I will definitely check it out tomorrow.
Thank you.
That's it.
Thank you. Madam Secretary, do we have any communication this evening?
No, we do not.
Thank you. First order of business we have is finance, Ms. Burkett. Item A in regards to the IT consultant recommendation.
Thank you, Madam President. Before you is a request to consider a recommendation of staff for an IT consultant that responded to the Managed Information Technology Services and IT and telephony plan implementation. We underwent a exercise starting in September 29th, 2016, of issuing an RFP proposal for Managed Information Technology Services and IT and telephony plan and implementation to address the daily services for managed IT for the municipality and to look forward in partnership with an organization to identify areas where resources are needed, the introduction of new technology, the infrastructure needed to support that technology, to enhance the business services offered by the municipality. There were nine respondents to the proposal. Of the nine respondents, through the evaluation process, three were the highest scoring firms. Of the three, the firm that is here this evening and with council's permission, I would ask that they come up to talk a little bit about themselves, is SSI Inc. They are located in King of Prussia. They were able to interact with the evaluation team that included police and fire, finance and administration to work with the evaluation of the proposals and discuss the needs of the municipality. Currently, we have outsourced IT technology and we are recognizing that there is a need for more support. We are looking for someone who has experience with local government and who also has a proximity to the municipality. With that, if with council's permission, I would invite Chris Callahan and his associate to come up and just give a little bit of background about SSI and their experience in IT managed services and part of the response to the proposal that was submitted by the
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'm Chris Callahan and I work for SSI. This is Tiberiu, one of our systems engineers. And what I'd like to do is just tell you a little bit about our company, how we work with other local government organizations, and what we provide from an outsourced IT management and cloud hosting perspective. So we've been in business for 29 years. We're located over in King of Prussia on Crooked Lane Road. We have a little bit under 100 employees total and we have over 50 techs and engineers. So we support a couple hundred different companies in the mid-Atlantic region and we have found local government, townships, and municipalities to be somewhat of a hotbed for our organization's services. We act as a fully outsourced IT department taking care of user support, server support, data center management, network management, and really have a proactive approach for the security requirements across all the departments within local government. So some of the neighbors are already using us, South Whitehall Township, Plymouth Meeting, West Whiteland, the Juvenile Justice Center of Philadelphia. These are all longtime customers of ours that have been, you know, some of your colleagues have spoken with to listen to their feedback with our services. And, you know, as Chinora was saying, an RFP was released in September and we look at a lot of RFPs. The RFP that was released for the municipality of Norristown was absolutely in our wheelhouse. You know, we looked at what you guys needed in terms of an IT provider and it spoke directly to what we do at SSI on a daily basis. It's a 24/7 management of all of your IT assets and infrastructure. And if you have any issue whatsoever, you call in and we are all full-time employees of the organization. We all, all U.S. citizens. We have all passed background checks for the other government clients that we work with and this is what we do every day at SSI. So we went through a rigorous evaluation process and we were happy to be selected for the next round in which we put together a comprehensive proposal after doing a network assessment. And we have user support for everything, all the way down to the laptops in the police cruisers, which we do for other government organizations. This is a standard practice for us, along with backup of all the data onsite as well as replication to two geographically disparate data centers in seismically neutral zones. One would be in Redding, Pennsylvania, one would be out in Salt Lake City, Utah. We also have included our network monitoring, threat protection, mobile device management, and then there are some additional services that are included as a byproduct of being our customer. You would have access to a virtual CIO, somebody like Tiberiu, who would be, in effect, your sounding board for all things IT related. We would also be taking care of telephone support, vendor liaison for any other IT vendors that you may have, emergency onsite support. If you need, if you had a network outage, we would have somebody here onsite in literally minutes. But we'd actually have alerting set up on our system to make sure that doesn't happen. We have a procurement team. If you needed any laptops, desktops, things like that, we order those on behalf of our customers. And then you'd also have a discounted project rate for anything outside the scope of the agreement that we set forth. From a high level, that's really what we proposed. If anybody has any questions, I'm more than happy to answer them.
How many staff do you have?
Staff? Full-time, we have a little bit under 100. We have over 50 techs and engineers on the tech side. So we're pretty top-heavy on the tech and engineering side. And it is worth mentioning, I didn't speak about this, if you stack our company up against other managed IT service providers worldwide, due to company size, revenue, and customer base, we would be in the top 6 percent of managed IT service providers worldwide. Most of our customers have been with us for over 10 years, some over 15 and some over 20. Our key differentiator in the marketplace is our customer retention and our employee retention. We have a lot of employees that have been with the company for over 20 years, some over 15 and some over 10. Despite his young looks, Tiberiu has been with us for close to 10 years now. You know, that's unheard of in IT. So we have a, we have a culture there that people really seem to like working for the company. Our employees know our customers well and our customers know our employees really well.
Councilwoman Lewis? Thank you, Madam President. In addition to your government clients, who are, what other types of businesses do you serve?
Sure, we're pretty industry agnostic. So we have financial customers, we have healthcare organizations, we are certified for HIPAA compliance, Sarbanes-Oxley, PCI compliance. We, we really are industry agnostic. There's a couple industries that we have good footholds in, finance and healthcare, nonprofits and government would probably be the top four. But, you know, we have manufacturing companies, law, ton of law firms. It really is industry agnostic. It really is industry agnostic.
Councilman Jones?
I'm curious to know, somebody neighboring the municipality that you might be working with, and what kind of impact have you made between their day-to-day operations?
Sure. So, my clients, I have two municipalities I deal with. South Whitehall Township and West Whiteland Township. We solved a lot of issues since we joined both of those municipalities. South Whitehall was in pretty good stand, good hardware and everything. But we got them up to date. They had a really old email system, and this year we're hoping to put them on cloud. Is this on? There we go. So, South Whitehall had a really old exchange server. We got them up to newer version. We're hoping to put them on the cloud this year. Same thing with West Whiteland. They just signed a cloud deal for hosted exchange, and they're looking at our phone system as well. Mostly for cost savings, but also better productivity in case they lose internet. South Whitehall is out in Allentown, so they're kind of middle-of-nowhere. They do lose internet quite a lot, and sometimes power outages. So, that will help them out when things like that happen. So, those are some of the main things we did for them.
Councilman Perry?
Implementation. How long will it take for you to implement everything that Norristown needs? Because I know we're in dire need of some new IT services here.
Right. So, usually, we have an onboarding process where we install agents on all your computers, all your servers, and we gather as much information as we can so our help desk can support you. Once that is done, then we look at all your problems. We basically, you know, rate them from the most severe to the least severe, and we give timelines for each of those projects. Based on that and cost, we will come with recommendations to you, and you can, you know, decide which projects you want to tackle first. Normally, for it to fix everything you guys have, I would say probably six months, I think we can get you in a really good spot.
Have you ever had a breach in your IT? Because, you know, we have police and fire, which is very important, and we, you know, we protect the...
Yeah. We use really good security software that have stopped multiple breaches. I can't think of any breaches that we've had. We did have some instances of CryptoLocker. I'm not sure if you ever heard of it. It's basically a malware that users download through their email attachments. They run it, and then what it does is it kind of spreads out through the network and encrypts all the files in the network, and then it basically asks you for a ransom. So, we did have a few of those infections. We were able to restore everybody's files without them having to pay any kind of ransom just because of our backup systems.
Councilwoman Scott Cooper?
Okay, I have a really, a really deep pet peeve about you, and I don't know if it's not, but I hope, if you don't have to answer this, it's a statement. I hope that if there is a password sensitivity issue where we have to change the password, that's frequent we have to do now, that somebody's there to help us on weekends when that happens.
Absolutely. And actually, I'm on call this week, so I get plenty of calls like that. Yeah, usually on weekends, I hear from police departments and, you know, not many other people. Usually police departments. Passwords usually. Yeah, no, we're there to help. Doesn't matter what kind of issue. You know, after our support is the same as during business hours, we're not going to tell you, this is not an emergency, I can't help you. So, we're going to help you out.
Councilwoman Scott Cooper, so it sounds like you were requesting a 24-hour, seven-day-a-week service in the event that you are not traveling that weekend, correct? Any other questions, counsel? Councilwoman Gardner?
My question is, if we enter into a contract with you, is there any other underlying costs that we should anticipate for service calls or anything along those lines? Customer support? Weekend calls about passwords? Anything along those lines? Any extra costs that we...
It's a good question. So, what we set forth is a comprehensive support package, right? It covers you 24 hours a day, seven days a week. Doesn't matter what the issue is. We would be your IT department taking care of it. And this is a shift in the model from a break-fix provider where you'd be charged hourly. What we have is a set monthly rate for each employee and server and piece of infrastructure. And then, basically, with that monthly agreement, it's in our best interest to keep you up and running at all times. So, we're incentivized to keep you up and running and to keep the calls coming in to us as minimal as possible. In the past, the IT provider was incentivized for you to have issues, and then you call them, and then you get charged. So, the industry's moved away from that, and with our package, you don't get any additional charges. The worst thing for our customers is an unexpected IT expense. That is the quickest way for us to ruin the relationship. So, it is in our best interest to keep you up and running and not to have any additional charges.
I guess the only additional charges would be projects.
Projects.
They're billed hourly, but we plan ahead of time, so you guys have a budget for them.
You would have a virtual CIO assigned to your organization who would meet with you on a quarterly basis to go through what type of projects you would have on the horizon for six to nine months down the road so that you can properly budget and prioritize them. A project would be something beyond the scope of what we've discussed here. So, say you opened up a new firehouse, or you had a, you know, you absorbed another organization or started a new department. Those could be things that are outside what we have already allocated for, and we could talk you through what those, you know, prices would look like. But for everything that you have here today, you'd be covered under this agreement.
I have a question for Mrs. Burkett. Mrs. Burkett, could you please explain to counsel and the constituents why it is that we are looking for an RFP? And how, if we were to choose SSI, how much time-saving it would be in regards to loss of time in reference to trying to come up with an error or someone coming out to fix the solution?
Okay. Madam President and counsel, what we are doing is looking at why we issued an RFP for the Information Technology Managed Services is because we currently have an incumbent provider who has been in place for approximately two and a half to three years. And we've been working with them. They are located in upstate New Jersey, close to New York. They are a service provider that handles our help desk tickets. They respond to our support needs for equipment and for installation of software, installation of desktops, laptops, things of that nature. Because of their lack of proximity, they come out once monthly to address the concerns of the municipality based on the ticket system, if it cannot be addressed online or over the phone. Any additional calls are additional fees. What we have been experiencing is that the team that is currently in place, while they've been very good in getting us at a baseline from where we were before they started, and let me back up to say that prior to those, that company starting, we had an internal information technology support person in place. And the transition from that person to the consultant that is currently in place was to address the daily needs and to create an environment of stability. So, they were able to do that, but now we are finding at this point that as we move forward in the needs of the various departments, specifically the police and the fire, we are finding that the technology knowledge about the services has not been, they've not been as familiar with public safety, with the local government requirements, with the ability to create a spec, a specification based on job duties, responsibilities and equipment needs. And we are experiencing difficulty with the lack of ability to have that understanding in place. What that requires, then, is the resources of my time, specifically to interact and act as the de facto IT manager for the municipality to answer questions, facilitate support, to identify resources and to locate equipment. It also is incumbent upon the fire department and the police department to have some internal experts, which also diverts their time from their public safety responsibilities to respond to IT issues when we were not able to utilize the consultant. The consultant that we currently have is not a 24-hour, seven-day-a-week provider. We are, they are only available to us between 8:30 and 4:30, which is also a concern because we have 24-hour operations. This particular RFP specifically mentioned the needs of the municipality. And what we were looking for was someone who would be able to respond to those needs, knowledgeable about the work processes, the security needs, the vendor-in-year action, which is another component that we don't currently have. Because of the transition and the remoteness of the provider, things are learned as we go along in some cases, and we would like to have an ability to have a system where we have a partnership with someone who's knowledgeable about IT services. I can say that I've learned a lot, but I am not a expert. And to have a partnership with an organization that not only has the depth and the breadth to handle the technology needs of the municipality, but also has a focus and the understanding of what the local governments need and want and need to do, especially around the security, backup, equipment, identification needs that we have here, management of our email server, management of technology around cellphone service, telephone service, to ensure that we have a continuity of service and we don't have a breakdown should there be an emergency or should there be an issue. We also want someone who's proactive in being able to identify issues and concerns before they become a problem. What we don't want to have happen is we're calling the provider to say we have a problem. We want someone who calls us and says, "I think you have a problem, and I'm working on it." That gives us a sense of ability to rely on the provider and not necessarily concern ourselves with those internal operations when we could be better served divesting our time and attention to the responsibilities of our position. The quote that was submitted by SSI is comparable in price to what we are currently paying the current provider. So, we are currently paying about $107,000 annually, and the proposal that they have provided to us is about $110,000 annually, and that is an additional component with the 24-hour, seven-day-a-week service. It's also with the ability to understand and know about the specifics around public safety and police and fire system needs, requirements and security, which we have been looking to address with this RFP. They also have experience in planning, which would assist with capital improvement plans and identifying the resources that we need should we implement additional equipment, hardware and/or software, and how our infrastructure would need to be bolstered to be able to handle that additional outlay of needs for technology. And so, with that, that is why we are looking to transition from our incumbent provider to the current RFP respondent that we've reviewed with the evaluation process. We also, as an aside, received very high notes from the evaluation team, from their interaction with the team based on their interview and their interaction with their tour of the facilities and questions, and their knowledge of public service and public safety and municipal governments.
Thank you, Ms. Burkett. Vice President Perry?
The system upgrades? What was that, sorry? I don't believe that the changes that we're making are going to be so apparent to you guys where you'll need additional training. A lot of the upgrades that we're doing are going to be in the backend, replacing older servers, upgrading software. But everything forth-facing should be the same.
It's also worth noting that a lot of times when our clients call in, our help desk technicians will initiate a shared screen session where they'll walk through the end user with how to resolve the issue. So, there is a bit of knowledge transfer that takes place as we're helping you. You're seeing what we're doing to resolve issues. We try to make it so that you're not ever calling us for the same thing twice, right? If that's happening, then we have a problem that we need to address on our side, right? So, I think that there is a bit of training that takes place just as a byproduct of being our customer.
Thank you. Mrs. Burkett, are you looking for the full body of counsel to take action this evening?
I'm asking for the municipal council to consider a recommendation of staff to appoint SSI Inc. as the IT consultant for the municipality of Norristown for outsourced IT managed information technology needs and for the support for the telephone, the IT and telephony plan and implementation.
Thank you. Would a member of counsel like to make a motion to appoint SSI for the recommendation of IT consultant for the various technology needs of the municipality? All in favor? Any nays? The ayes have it, that motion is approved. Thank you, and congratulations. Mrs. Burkett? We have item B, and that is to discuss the advertisement of Ordinance 16-16, the 2016 proposed 2017 budget.
Yes, Madam President, thank you. We will be putting the presentation up on the screen for the audience as well. Mr. Jones and I would go through the presentation together. But what I will identify is that this is a request for a motion to approve or disapprove the advertisement of Ordinance 16-16 of 2016 for the proposed 2017 municipal budget and establish the 2017 real estate tax millage rate.
Madam President and council members, I'll start off just real quick. As Ms. Burkett said, we're pleased to present to council this budget for fiscal year 2017. And the budget reflects as closely as possible the estimated revenues and expenses for the general operations of the government for the 2017 calendar year. We, after tonight, will make this budget available. We do have copies of the document on the table for residents who would like copies right now, but we'll make it available on the web, and it certainly will be available in all the usual places in the municipality, and we also make it available at public library. The budget reflects a proposed half-millage increase, which is basically a 3.94% increase in the millage rate for real estate taxes. This is done in conjunction with also the revenue generated from other sources of funds. And we believe this budget conscientiously represents the necessary funding and responsible funding for government operations, for paying debt services and operating our facilities. So, this budget reflects a $32,152,929 budget, which in terms of actual cash is about a 4.2% increase over the prior year budget. We also want to make note that the budget includes financial policies and procedures that we continue to believe set a strong foundation and framework for good governance. Our goal from the beginning has to, has been to not only be as transparent as possible in... Our goal from the beginning has been to not only be as transparent as possible in the administration of the budget, but also to be as sound as possible in our business management and to adhere to a philosophy of fiscal responsibility, long-term sustainability of what we propose, and good governance. Certainly is our desire always not to propose a tax increase, and we've successfully been able to do that over the past three budget cycles. But you get to a point where not doing so actually becomes fiscally irresponsible because we can certainly pretend that the cost of things do not increase and that those things do not impact the government. So, that's been our desire, and again, we don't want to be fiscally irresponsible and just arbitrarily say that we shouldn't be doing this now. While there are, you know, it was our design to do so, we looked at several things in terms of what was necessary to make this budget recommendation. Ms. Burkett will go through some of those things a little bit later, and I'll jump in as needed. But one of the things I can say is that, you know, while there were some legitimate staffing requests from departments, particularly with police, with fire, with public works, you know, this budget does not include any staff increases. Rather, these increases are really mostly related to a few things. One, the increasing costs of benefits to provide for employees, pensions, health insurance benefits, that item alone is a half-million-dollar increase when you look at benefits over the prior year. Our property values decreased, and primarily due to reassessments that were done on properties. So, our property values decreased slightly from the prior year, and as a result, our millage rate does not yield what it yielded last year. And so, that in turn resulted in it costing us more money to operate. And then, there were certainly the needs operationally to address and effectively and realistically address some material and supply needs in our public works operations beyond what had been occurring in prior years. One of the big challenges has been really for us over these last couple of years trying to identify, based on just the history of how that operation in particularly was managed, what is an effective public works budget. And we think we've identified that. Bringing on Mr. Odenibo has tremendously helped us in doing so, and so, this budget does reflect an increase, and I think is a justifiable, necessary increase to account for materials so that the work that citizens expect in terms of pothole patching, in terms of striping, in terms of improving signage in the community, and all of those basic-level service-delivery things that local governments should deliver, we can start addressing and not ignoring as they've been done over the years. And then, the final piece of this, of course, the biggest piece of any local government operation, because we're a service organization, is personnel. And as you know, the majority of the personnel in the municipality are contract personnel through labor agreements. I'm sorry, not contract personnel, but actually personnel who are represented through labor agreements. And so, agreements have been negotiated and multi-year agreements have been negotiated based on those labor agreements, and this is simply honoring this year's iteration of salaries that reflect that. So, when you talk about an organization of roughly 177 people, and, you know, when you talk, just to look at public works, police especially, fire, and codes which all make up, and part of the administrative staff which make up the contracted labor, that's pretty much 95% of your organization, has labor agreements with contracted salary increases. And so, this budget reflects that. We think it is a fiscally sound budget. Again, we think we still operate in a very lean and efficient manner. We actually, over the course of these last three budget cycles, reduced our operating overhead, we've reduced our staff, and we've increased our efficiency. So, when you boil it down to it, this isn't about anything within the control of administration or even within the control of the council in terms of what impacts the costs associated with this budget proposal. It's simply what it takes to, in 2017, effectively operate this government with a balanced budget. We will, over the course of this next couple of weeks, as we move hopefully toward council adoption of this budget at its December 20 meeting, we will continue to take input from council, and we will continue to look inwardly as well at ways we could possibly reduce that half-mill increase. But at the end of the day, just those costs that we couldn't avoid, and those that decrease in revenue that we had no control of resulted in a $1.2 million-plus, $1.2 million-plus deficit in revenue that we had to fill. And I also want to add that this budget does contain some things that we, you know, we reasonably looked at, rate structures. We think during the course of this year, we're going to have to look at some rate structures in terms of permits, fines, et cetera, that we might consider. One of the things that we also needed to make a note of in terms of one of the things we're proposing in this document to generate some revenue is that, you know, we have a tenant in this building that historically we have never charged for being a tenant in this building. And so, we pay for the water, we pay for the electricity, they have our space, they use our phone system. And so, this budget actually incorporates a modest cost to pass on to that organization to begin to offset some of those things. One final point that I think points also back to not only the fiscal soundness in terms of what we were trying to do, but over the course of these last three cycles, we have not only significantly paid down our debt, but we've also built enough of a fund balance that instead of proposing a full one-millage increase, we were able to offset doing that by using a portion of fund balance to pay down that $1.2 million gap between revenue and expenditures and lessen the impact on residents. So, what you have ultimately is that the average resident, as a result of this budget, the average homeowner would pay about $34, a little over $34 a year more in taxes than they paid in the previous year. So, with that, I'll turn it over to Ms. Burkett to follow up with any other comments.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. What I'd like to do is very briefly go through the presentation that we provided to council to just sort of walk through the budget process and just some key points that we wanted to present as part of this conversation. So, the first page we have is the budget timeline. This basically represents how we execute the budget through the year. The budget is actually an ongoing process throughout the fiscal year, but we set key points when we have to have certain actions taken, and through the process, we are at the point where we're at December 6, and we are presenting the preliminary budget to council for consideration. With approval by the municipal council, we would be permitted to advertise the proposed budget and move through the process. The budget process also continues through the remainder of the year till December 30, or when municipal council approves the final budget. We will continue to be informed about this process until the end of the year when that process is complete. This page represents the municipal departments and the department managers and/or directors of those particular departments that participate in this budget process and are very helpful in informing how the operations of the municipal government works and what responsibilities and resources they need to perform their daily functions for the daily operations of the municipality. This slide represents the other operating cost, and these are costs that are not necessarily department-specific but are overall in a component structure of reviewing the municipal operations, legal services, administrative overhead, IT, insurance, and those things fall into this bucket where it's not a daily operation, but it is a supporting cost of daily operations. This is an organization chart, and as we represent, the residents of the municipality of Norristown are our bosses. Next in line is the municipal council, along with the municipal administrator and all of the departments that he oversees and the department directors and/or managers for the municipality. It is very important to understand that this is the structure that we work within when we are reviewing, preparing, and presenting the budget, because it's very important to keep that forefront in the minds of all of the parties that are participating in this process, that the end result of what we are doing is for the citizens of the municipality. This gives us a 2017 budget highlight. So, this is presenting, over the course of the past few years, the budget impact for the municipality, the millage rate that was presented, and the historic presentation of those numbers over the course of the last five years. As you can see, we've been incrementally growing the budget for the cost to operate the municipality, but in the meantime, we have maintained a stable level for the millage rate, and this is the first millage increase that has been requested to be considered since 2014. The overall municipal operating budget as proposed is $32,152,928. It is an increase of $1.294 million or 4.2% over the 2016 operating budget. The millage rate that we are asking to be considered is a .5 millage increase rate, which is around 3.94%. This is based on the projected assessment values of the properties within the municipality of Norristown as they were presented at the time this document was prepared, which is a slight decrease from the previous year, and those decreases are based on primarily appeals and exemptions. The proposed budget breakdown provides a cost share of, a view of the costs that are associated with the municipality. The costs are based on the departments and/or cost centers. So, we have police and fire, which represent 26% and 8% respectively, pension expense and public works, 10% and 8% administrative overhead are all of those things that support the municipality, including insurance and things of that nature. And then, we have the overall component, 12% of it is our debt service, and as Mr. Jones referred to, we have been consistently paying down our debt. When I arrived with the municipality, we were in the process of moving forward, which was around $30 million, and we're now around $17 million over the course of making timely payments over that time. This gives a line, a department item view of the changes in the various departments for the 2017 budget compared to the 2016 budget. I will read through the value changes for those departments for the changes. So, for administration, we're looking at a .77% increase or $2,822. Both executive and finance departments' budgets have decreased from the previous year for 17.52%, 1.51% respectively, or approximately a total of about $20 million, $20,000. Human resources, increase of about 5% or $9,900. Police, an increase of 2.97% or $245,000. Fire, about 1.81% or $43,000. Planning and zoning, $150,000 or 22.44%. Code enforcement, $51,000, 6.56%. Recreation, $16,000 or 6.2%. Public works, about $12,000 or 4.4%. Administrative overhead is $352,000 or about 8.53%. Insurance was $87,900 or 7%. Debt service remained pretty stable, only about $28,000. Pension increased by $117,000. Shared business services is a new component for a line item, and that is a department that was created to capture costs that are shared across the municipality for professional services, and that is a total budget of $101,000. The solid waste collection or trash removal is about $4,000 increase, and the contributions in civic activities did not increase over last year.
If you, council, I do want to point out particularly regarding that planning and zoning, since it stands at 22.44%. This is in support, that increase is in support of council's desire that we focus some of our resources to matching grants, to be able to leverage more grants for the municipality. So, the bulk of that $150,000 has to do with us putting up additional funds to match grants for projects to support economic development activities as a result of our grant-writing activities, which we have not been able to do in the past, and also, we've had such a heavy reliance on block grants, but as you know, block grants steadily decreasing, so also adversely impacting our ability to seek grant funding unless we identify some funding in the budget to do it. And finally, as you know, usually, that funding match is anywhere from a low of 5% to a high as much as 50% in terms of doing it, and typically, it's in the 20% to 50% range that we find ourselves doing it. Thank you.
Changes in budget revenue. In the process of reviewing the impact on the budget, we looked at the revenues and the expenses, and we have presented a balanced budget. In order to do so, the revenue categories that were impacted or changed in comparison to last year were the real estate tax and the enabling tax, which includes the business privilege, earning income, and local services tax. The grants and contribution specifically in mentioning, as Mr. Jones did, has decreased from the previous year, and that is the population of funds that we get from federal, state, and local agencies. So, we're seeing a decrease in that, and that's why we're also undertaking the exercise to identify a stream of funding to support increasing that revenue stream, and then in support of economic development and utilizing those funds to grow activities within the community. Fines and permits are increasing about $110,000, and that speaks to, in part, what Mr. Jones had mentioned about our fee structure and the permits and changes in the way that some of our permits are being calculated and the fees that are being charged to some industries regarding services provided within the municipality. Service fees are anticipated to increase about $377,000. General funds reserves, which are the component of the funds that we're looking at for, from the ability to have a fund balance and to support a lower millage rate recommendation, is about $313,000, and then we have the other category, which is about $40,000. And this pie chart represents the percentage allocations of those dollars and how that is represented in the population for the total change in the budget from last year to this year. This schedule represents the changes in the budget expenses that required us to take a look at the revenue items and make those adjustments accordingly, and looking at the overall budget and considering all of the costs, we make sure that we're representing an effective and efficient and lean government, but we have responsibilities and activities that must be taken care of and commitments that the municipality has made over a long-term period that are also addressed within this budget. So, what is represented is that personnel and benefits respectively are increased by $364,000 and $534,000. Materials, supplies, and repairs is about $534,000. $364,000 and $534,000. Materials, supplies, and repairs is about $80,000. Utilities, trash removals, and insurance increased by about $143,000. Professional contracted services actually went down. Economic development, projects, and civic contributions are $129,000. Debt service and the capital lease, which is the bond payments that we make and equipment leases that we have, is $13,000, and then there are other costs that are represented by about $36,000 for a total of $1.294,879. The pie chart also represents the percentage allocation of those cost components over the population of that total change, with personnel and benefits representing 28% and 41% respectively, making up a large majority of the costs that are considered as part of this budget for the upcoming fiscal year. So, the budget impact, we wanted to present a schedule that gave an overview of how we look at the budget increase in the categories that are impacted by a change. We have several different parcel types within the municipality for a total of 10,306 parcels. The parcels are broken down between taxable parcels and non-taxable parcels. The total taxable parcels, as of October 25th, which is the last time that we received an updated report, represented $882,961,980, and that population was spread over the category types of apartments, commercials, industrial, and residential. So, the percentage of the parcels is provided here, as well as the percentage of the assessments, and you can see that the residence portion represents a higher portion of our overall parcels, but it also represents the highest portion of our overall revenue source. So, with the current millage rate, these taxes are what would be generated for the municipality for all of those dollars. The tax-exempt and utility parcels are parcels that are non-taxable, and we do not receive revenue, but they exist as part of the total population of the properties located in the municipality of Norristown. With the proposed millage increase of .5%, what we are looking at is a shared value change in the tax bill that residents and property owners would see, receive, and we took a look at it based on the categories and how that would impact those different categories, based on the assessment values and the calculation of the taxes, based on last year's and the current real estate tax and this year's and the current real estate tax. So, what we're seeing is that for all of the other categories, it is higher by amount of about $16,000 for apartments, $2,000 for commercial properties, $2,600 for industrial, and about $868 per parcel for residents. With the proposed millage increase, those numbers go to $17,299 for apartments. Commercial is $2,461. Industrial properties would see a tax bill that is $2,793, and residents, based on the average assessment, would see about $902, which represents about a $34.20 increase over the current tax bill that they're seeing. The average assessed value is based on the total number of properties and the total assessed value. It represents the population of every property it's classified, with properties being valued higher or lower, and the impact of that tax is averaged out and represented here in this particular schedule. We receive those assessment values and information from the Board of Assessment. We receive them on a regular basis, and for the purposes of the tax for the budget that we prepare, I specifically asked for a point-in-time report to be able to do this calculation and see what the impact overall would be on the community, because as Mr. Jones had indicated, while it is not our wish to have a property tax increase, if we are going to be able to do that, I also wanted to provide information about what that looks like on an individual basis based on the classifications. So, what's next? We've presented tonight to municipal council, and we'll wait to hear what they consider the next steps in this process, and there will be a period of public review for comment and feedback. We, with the approval of council, we intend to come back to present at the December 20th council meeting for consideration for the approval of the 2017 fiscal year budget. If there are any questions, I'd be glad to answer them.
Councilwoman Brady.
Thank you, Madam President. I just have a question regarding procedure. Tonight's vote is strictly to advertise the budget and open it for public comment. If there were any changes made to the ordinance, what could that be, what could we see in terms of how that process is looked at? And maybe this is a question that the solicitor can answer.
Yes, Councilwoman Brady. If council wants to go ahead and change the budget after it has been advertised, it is free to do so, except it cannot, what you can do is, you can cut expenditures, you could actually lower the millage rate that's been currently advertised, but you cannot go higher. So, if council was, for whatever reason, after receiving the input of residents or amongst themselves, wanted to look at different line items and perhaps adjust them in any way, which led to a lower millage, you can go ahead and do that, but you cannot go higher than the millage rate that would be advertised starting tonight per vote, if that's what you want to do.
So, we just learned, you know, we just learned about a tax increase at the county level, so now we're looking at another tax increase at the municipality level. Around $66 at the county level, around $34 at the municipality level. What would you say are the biggest determining factors that would require us to increase our taxes here in the municipality?
Again, I go back to, in my, in my opening statement, you know, we tried very diligently to avoid what became something that was out of our control, and it basically is health benefits that, you know, our healthcare increased tremendously, oh, the cost of our healthcare increased tremendously over the course of the year. We also saw a decrease in our valuation of properties in, through assessments and the fact that we have so many exempt properties. That comes with the territory to some degree of being the county seat, and so, you're gonna, you're gonna see a lot of exempt nonprofit properties in the community. Material and supply costs that go along with, you know, operating the government, the cost of buying materials and paying for materials for the various entities, the cost of utilities, et cetera. So, it's those, it's those things that impacted our increase. And again, as I said, and Shonora also said, the thing that we tried to do to offset that was to take advantage of the fact that we've been fiscally responsible and over the last three years have not raised taxes, so we were able to, in that period of time, bolster our fund balance enough to be able to offset some of that $1.2 million in costs. I forget the page number on the, in the budget document that actually outlines specifically, I'll look at it real quickly, outlines specifically what those, those revenue increases were. I mean, those, those expense increases were by category, but here, here it is now. So, you look at personnel costs, again, through upgraded, I mean, through contracts, for 95% of personnel is $364,000 plus. The cost of benefits, that's health and pension costs increases at $534,000. Materials, supplies, needed repairs that have to, have to be done, $80,000, and, you know, everybody sees that list. The only discretionary thing that, you know, that was really a result of us, you know, putting in additional revenue needs, it goes back to, again, supporting council's goal for economic development and wanting us to use grant funds to leverage, to leverage projects that, that the council would want to pursue. And the thing about that is, you know, we think it's, it's a smart move because it's through leveraging grants that you get to get a lot of the work done in the community. For instance, you know, if we can get the federal government to pay 75% of the cost of doing something and we only pay 25% of the cost, that's a very, very good deal. So, it's, it's those kind of projects, you know, in terms of that, one line item is really the one that we have had control of and the impact.
Councilwoman Scott Cooper.
Yeah, I'll, I'll take that one. The last time the county had a reassessment was about 20 years ago.
Yeah.
And the reassessment is essentially a county-wide function, and that's up to the Board of Commissioners to go ahead and ask for a reassessment. Of course, a municipality has standing to go ahead and sue or reassess every property or account, what the property, if they so see fit, but the county has not done a reassessment in close to 20 years, which we have lined a wire. County will evaluate and make a decision.
The municipality can appeal the assessment if it can, lose that part. There is a party to do so. Of course, usually, that's a small circumvent of that allegation, but the municipality has standing to do so as well. But we have the background that, that you have to pay somebody to go ahead and do that, like a law firm, and if it was contested, you would have to go ahead and pay for the praiser to change the rationale and your reassessment.
My next question is, I have a question, I have a question, I have a question here, and I'm not going to have a non-honorable, I don't want to sound opposed altogether to the case, however, I am leading that way, I don't want to sound such as, I'm a public person, and then the taxes are going to be a burden, and so, I'm kind of going to send something, many of the, and I know that we've had, we've had, and we've had, I'm just trying to think of other ways. As, as, as Councilman Jones said, the county's going to be, it's already hurting the risk count, because it's already hurting all of us, including myself. I just feel that if there are other ways, other options.
Agreed, Councilwoman Cooper. Mr. Jones.
Thank you, Madam President. Madam, I'm sorry, Councilmember Cooper, we certainly understand. I also wanted to certainly point out that as we were looking at doing this and some of the ways, again, that we tried as, as much as possible to minimize this is, one, I talked about the tenant in the building and, and what we're doing with that, you know, this is a cost we've been absorbing for decades without, and, and not addressing, so we're doing that. The other, one of the other things we did, as, as you know, in an early action by council, is that we, we are having an audit performed of, of business, business privilege taxes in the community because we know that there's revenue probably that's not being captured from some businesses not paying their fair share. Now, we, again, because we're going to be prudent in making a recommendation, we made a, a very conservative recommendation there in terms of about $200,000 of additional captured revenue, knowing that that surge would be a one-time thing that we would look at. Another thing that I, I would, I would say that will also hopefully impact us over the course of the year is, you know, we did calculate, again, conservatively, the fact that there are going to be, you know, at the Western Project, Weststrom Project, I'm sorry, 149, I think it's 149, 157? Yeah, 157 new, new residents in terms of EIT and other ratables that are going to come in the community as well. We can't, you know, until it happens, you can only make your best estimate, but those things are going on as well. So, we will, over the course of this next two weeks, we will still be looking at ways to do it, taking whatever ideas you have as well. The thing that, again, I always have to caution because I think, you know, my job and the job of finance director is to, to be revenue conservative in not overestimating our revenues, is that we don't put ourselves in a position where you have to do a major tax hack, tax hike in one year to make up for not taking the prudent action in a prior year. So, that's, that's my only concern, and, and again, that's, those are some of the things that we've already been looking at, you know, we talked about and council approved in the course of this, this, earlier this year, looking at user fees that, that impact not community, but the community have been bearing a portion of the cost. So, we did some user fee increases as well. So, we've, we factored in practically a lot of the, of the things that we are aware of in terms of, in terms of revenue sources, and we'll continue to, to do that. But my caution is always going to be, be conservative so that we don't find ourselves having to come to council about a one mil or two mil or beyond increase because we underestimated revenue in, overestimated revenue, I'm sorry, overestimated revenue in, in a prior year.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. Councilman Perry.
You said, anyway, you said there's projected assessments. How many projected assessments are we going to get, knowing that the county has done assessments in about 20 years? And is this on a, is this on a yearly basis that they're doing this? And how many assessments have been done over, let's just say, the last five years?
I would ask the solicitors specifically speak about the assessment process, but assessments happen regularly. They're either through the request of the property owner or because of the change in classification. We receive the reports about those changes on a monthly basis, and what generally happens is they apply them either on an interim basis or on an annual basis. The assessments that we are evaluating are actually going to be in place on January 1st based on their, the Board of Assessment's current communication. So, the assessments that are decreasing, I've been notified that this is happening as of January 1st. The volume of it depends on the activity in the municipality. It's based... It's based on, again, property owner request. It's based on change in ownership. It's based on changes in the property, and it's also based on, I believe, changes in classification.
So we're basically looking at home people who are residents to come up with something to assess their own house and then come to us so we can approve with this approval?
Councilman Perry, that's a process on the county. So the county Board of Assessment is an agency appointed by the county commissioners. And what would happen is, if a property owner or the municipality or a school district did not feel like assessing was just, they would file a petition to the Board of Assessment, three people that, again, are appointed by the county commissioners. And then they would make their case before the Board of Assessment. To have any reality in achieving success in front of the Board of Assessment, you would also have to hire an appraiser, an expert, to substantiate that valuation. So the assessment is not that a Norris Towny comes to this council. A Norris Towny, if they're interested in changing, they are realistic assessment, would have to petition a board appointed by a county commissioner.
Okay, do we pay the county commissioners to do the assessments?
Uh, you do not pay the county commissioners the assessments. Of course, your tax dollar and every resident in Montgomery County supports the county budget. The staff and the Board of Assessment and the people on the Board of Assessment are compensated for that. So your tax dollars are owing for that.
In anyone's opinion, I don't know who answers this. If all the assessments were done how they're supposed to be done, would there be a possibility that we would not be raising the taxes currently or we would still be able to, we would still If all the assessments were done like they're supposed to be?
Very difficult to say because you're going to have, in any reassessment, some go up and some go down. And so, and that is, you know, based on what appraisals would come back with and basically what the board would approve once, you know, they've heard a case for an assessment. So very difficult to say that it would work out if it was completely done all over, it would work out to our benefit or not. I can say this, typically, if it's been 20 years since appraisals have been done, that you probably have a significant amount of undervalued properties out there, but you might also have some overvalued properties out there.
So also in regards to the EIT, would, if we would have done that a while ago, what would maybe have been the outcome for our agents from that?
Well, the activity for the business privilege tax audit that we're doing, we anticipate is a one-time activity. The growth or the revenue generated from that exercise would be bringing people into compliance. Those activities may have happened in a previous year. They may not be happening now. So the outcome of that evaluation is what we're hoping to see, what the potential growth in the revenue stream going forward would be. But the impact initially will be a large impact, and that's why we're proposing it would have hit this year as opposed to last year if we'd done it earlier.
Councilwoman Burdine?
I think we have too many microphones on. I think if someone was trying to mic them. Oh, thank you. The question I had was, what actually, what criteria goes into an assessment? And, for example, if the county did a reassessment of Norristown, I'm assuming that it could also go the other way, that our assessments could go down as well as they could go up. But my question is, what criteria goes into an assessment, aside from the physical characteristics of the property?
So, uh... In my experience in representing both public and private clients in assessments, there's a couple of things that go into a factor besides the physical characteristics of the property. So the Board of Assessment by law is, has to apply what's called a common level ratio. The common level ratio is a formula set by the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, which goes ahead and evaluates what assessments, what is, an assessment multiplying fee, assessment multiplying number based on the underlying assessment is, and this is calculated by the state on an annual basis. Montgomery County, because we're a wealthy county, like Chester County, is particularly high. In the past, Norristown Council, 10, 12 years ago, asked us to look at that number because it was the feeling of council at the time that it was not, that the number hurt Norristown because Montgomery County's number was so high. Meanwhile, places like Norristown and Pottstown and some of the other boroughs perhaps were not as wealthy as Lower Marion. So the common level ratio is applied by the Board of Assessment after, or by the county, after receiving the appraised value from the Board of Assessment. When the Board of Assessment makes their decision, when I represent private and public clients, what I ask for an appraiser is, one is the physical condition of the property, and then comparables. Comparables meaning property roughly in the area, early since southeastern Pennsylvania, that resemble what the property is. And they look at sales over the last year, and the appraiser makes their case and says, you know, three single-family homes in 19401 with 2,000 square feet sold for $190,000, you know, in the last year. Therefore, based on my professional opinion, the characteristics of the property, that's what we come to. So it's, I, when the Board of Assessment, I've not been on a Board of Assessment, but when I've been an advocate in front of them, I rely heavily on comparables. But the underlying public policy issue, aside from that, is also the common level ratio, which goes into the calculation of real estate taxes, which is provided by the state.
Thank you. So are things such as quality of life and desirability of location included in these assessments or common level ratio?
Well, in an assessment, the assessment, as Ms. Burkett talked about, is what has been set 20 years ago when the last countywide reassessment was done. Or, in a place like Norristown, there's been a lot of properties that have turned over, so they have been reassessed. So there's been change in use, there's been change in owner in relation to that. As far as the physical, as far as the condition of the property, that was your question? No.
No, I was talking about whether or not Norristown as municipality is a desirable place to live or quality of life issues, things that would make Norristown a place where people would want to come to. That's why I'm asking, does that factor in to an assessed value?
Not in relation to the common level ratio. That's more countywide formula set by the state, which is a 10,000-foot look at Montgomery County, not Norristown specifically. As far as quality of life issues, and if an appraiser was looking at things and you appealed an appraiser, of course it does because if you're looking at comparables, quality of life issues always come into play into why someone purchased a property and
So then, wouldn't it be fair to say that if you have a municipality that is onerous to its residents for one reason or another, that those assessed values would not be as
I can't really opine on that. I really have no basis to say.
All right. Thanks.
You'd have to ask the Board of Assessment on that.
Okay. You basically answered my question. I appreciate it. Thanks.
Any other questions? Councilwoman Lewis?
Given that we are the county seat and the relationship that we have with the county, are there any special considerations that they look at Norristown, given the rate of poverty and all those other factors, that they may offer special considerations or any benefits or anything like that? Are they taking in consideration that they are in our county and we are belabored with a lot of exempt properties, as you mentioned, where they can compensate the municipality for that?
I know, certainly prior to my time, there used to be a stipend set aside to accommodate that, and at some point, the county stopped doing it. I can say, as it relates to actions specifically, that the commission has taken since I've been here, part of their strategy has been to privatize some of their properties so that they can go back on the tax roll because that has been the discussion with them from council members and from staff about the impact of so many nonprofit and exempt properties in the municipality. So they made a point of trying to privatize their buildings. They were, I think the last one they tried was One Montgomery, and nobody would take it for a lot of reasons. But the health building and other properties, they have done that and specifically related, they wanted to do that, to take into consideration those dollars that were taken away and the impact on the community.
Have further conversations happened since they weren't able to offload One Montgomery? And, I mean, it seems like some of their other buildings are, you know, somewhat elderly.
Well, I know a large part of the conversation we had with them about the campus project was about impact to the community. And one of the things that, one, we wanted and requested when they had the options of where they would focus that development, we wanted that focus to be in downtown on Main Street where the economic impact would be strongest. That's the option they chose. The other part was that we wanted to make sure that there was some mixed use in that project, that it not only just included government facilities, but opportunities to create some private sector, commercial facilities in conjunction with what they're doing. So, for instance, you know, having businesses as a part of the new campus. And so their effort, you know, they agreed that they would look at doing that, and as a matter of fact, they are also very interested, as are we, in having them work with our retail recruiter as we push that model. And so the goal is that what they do with that campus, because their goal is to make the, bring the whole courthouse square down to level ground to make it more accessible to people and create destination. And our input was, so part of that destination should be about commercial establishments as well as government establishments. So that's currently one of the ways they're trying to help accommodate that.
One more question or comment, rather. In conversations that Madam President and I had with the commissioners regarding the adult parole campus, was that the impact that it had on the community was an indirect impact as far as any jobs created or, you know, economic development happens as a destination, but for the residents, the impact directly to our residents, it's not necessarily dollars saved money in their pocket or lower taxes. So when we continue to have those conversations, can we include direct impact to our community, hence the 11% tax hike and things like that? Can that be put on the table since, you know, your properties are moving and this and that is happening, economic development? But the direct impact to our constituents, it's, I mean, the trickle-down effect is going to be, you know, years before any individual really benefits from those things happening.
We absolutely will. And I don't, honestly, I don't want to minimize even that indirect impact as well because, you know, improvements in the core of our downtown in conjunction with business development does impact the property values in town. And our budget is based on the value of properties. So that indirect cost, as the value of property goes up, that translates to a direct, you know, to a direct impact on what the value of our mileage rate is. I remember in a previous community I managed, we were right outside the city of Atlanta, and so there was always this comparison, is why is the city I manage, their mileage rate? You know, we got such a high mileage rate and Atlanta had a, you know, ours was 13 and Atlanta was seven. And why is ours so high? Well, when you look at the fact that one mil of an Atlanta, one Atlanta mil was $22 million and one East Point mil was $1,081, that's an impact. And so in this instance, if property values go up, the value of our, I think we're like $882,000 is a mil. If that mil becomes $1 million, for instance, then that means our property values have increased and our mileage rate actually now supports more dollars coming into community, which actually has an impact on what properties. So there is a, it's indirect, but people do eventually feel it.
Thank you, Councilwoman Lewis. Vice President Perry?
Just my last comment here, you know, just to read off some things here. Because at the end of the day, you know, we're representing the residents of Norristown, and if we don't look at it in that aspect, then we shouldn't be up here. Norristown per capita income is $21,369 compared to a county income of $41,699. Norristown household income, $42,296. County income, $79,926. Family income, $48,765. For the county, $99,683. We also have a 6.5% unemployment rate, which is number one in the county. We have a number one Norristown poverty rate, 21.7% compared to a 7.2%. So I'm hoping when we're, what we're talking about is about the Norristown residents at the end of the day, so.
Vice President Perry, so unfortunately, the numbers that the county are referring to aren't exactly Norristown. There's other counties incorporated into that. And yes, I am in agreeance with you in regards to standing for the residents in regards to not increasing the taxes, but we also need to be more mindful. And my thoughts on that would to be also is to place more onus on the county for them to take more consideration in regards to Norristown as a whole.
And I'm sorry, we just raised these property, these taxes from the county, 9% last year and 11% this year, you know, which is really impacting us at the end of the day. So I'm hoping that we start looking at some things instead of, you know, keep saying, I get it, relationships with the county, I get it, but at the end of the day, we have to have a voice for the Norristown residents. And I'm hoping everyone looks at that.
Thank you.
Just want to correct you. You didn't raise anything. They did. Because you said, "We just raised." Yeah, they just raised. Yeah, okay.
Hearing none. Would a member of council like to make a motion for the advertisement of ordinance 16-16 of 2016, proposed 2017 budget?
of ordinance 16 dash 16 of 2016, proposed 2017 budget? Madam Secretary, may I please have a roll call?
Olivia Brady, Valerie Scott Cooper, Hakeem Jones, Heather Lewis, Sue Ann Gardner, Derrick Perry, Sonia Sanders.
Aye. And that ordinance is passed. Next order of business we have is code enforcement. Mr. Simonsen?
Thank you, Madam President. The Harb, the Harb Board met in the month of November and had three, uh, hearings for certificate of appropriatenesses. Two of them were carryovers from October and one new in a November. 161005157 West Elm Street was to replace the shingle roof. 161007, which is 127 West Ari Street, was approved stucco for the garage walls and 161101, which is 310 East Basin Street, was to replace windows, doors and a new front porch.
Thank you, Mr. Simonsen. Any questions? Hearing none or seeing none. Would a member of council like to make a motion to approve the certificate of appropriateness for properties that applied for review by the Harb Board? All in favor? Any nays? Hearing none, the ayes have it, that motion is approved. Next order of business we have is planning and the municipal development. That would be Ms. Musagne.
Thank you, Council President. As council is aware, uh, we're at that part of the year where we are ready to submit the application for the Community Development Block Grant. Uh, we've gone through, um, the public participation process throughout the year. The history is outlined in the transmittal. Um, council did give authorization for the ordinance to be advertised, which it was. So in accordance to the, uh, process that has been adopted for, uh, submitting an application to HUD, we're at that stage in which now the ordinance, um, we're asking council to adopt the ordinance so that we can submit the application to HUD by, mm, January, um, actually by, by the end of December. So I'm asking council if they could please adopt the ordinance so that we can, in fact, submit the application.
Thank you. Any questions? Comments in regards to the ordinance? Would a member of council like to make a motion to, for the adoption of the ordinance 16 dash 15 of 2016 through 2017 Community Development Block Grant Budget Ordinance? Madam Secretary, may I please have a roll call?
Olivia Brady, Valerie Scott Cooper, Hakeem Jones, Heather Lewis, Sue Ann Gardner, Derrick Perry, Sonia Sanders.
Aye. That motion carries.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Would a member of council like to make a motion to adjourn the meeting? All in favor?
Aye.
Ayes have it, meeting adjourned.